This project is a long time in coming. I think it might be the first project I've come before your board, where we actually have a fully approved septic system. B 100A and site plan are all approved, and that is in large part one of the bases for hardship here. The site is, the soil conditions on the site are somewhat challenging in the sense that this one location for a new state-of-the-art septic system. And that location that was arrived at through a lot of the hard work from Tony Bolduc and Duo's office to relocate the existing structure, which is a single-family home and a shed in the rear. I don't know if you've been by the site, but the condition of them are, they need to be taken down. They're open to the elements. The site itself is in the commercial district, and it has a lot area of 6,528 square feet, or 20,000 feet is required in the commercial district. So it's substantially undersized lot. It also has a minimum lot width of 68 feet, where a typical lot in the commercial zone is required to have 100 feet. Those factors, the soil conditions, as well as the critical coastal resource line, basically renders the building envelope unbuilt. So we have an existing home and shed, which as a right could be rebuilt in place and raised to FEMA level. But what we're proposing and the reason we're seeking the variances is that there's a better alternative to reconstruction in place here to get the new structure to FEMA level and to have a complying and approved state-of-the-art septic system. The buildings, the current buildings are non-conforming in a number of respects. The most notable, and again, if you've been by the site, is the front yards setback. The house is very close to the street. And that front yard setback is 20 feet. It's actually located 12 feet from the property boundary. Both of the side yards are non-conforming, which is understandable for a lot that's only 68 feet wide when it's required to be 100. The south side yard is located 9 feet from the property boundary, and the north is 15.9. And then there is also a non-conformity with respect to the shed as to the rear yard, although we weren't able to verify the actual height of the shed. So I didn't list it as a non-conformity that's going to be eliminated, although I think it probably is. As you know, the rear yard, for an accessory building, it can be located as close to 6 feet from a side yard or rear yard. And if you take a 45-degree angle from the line, as long as your accessory building is under that, you can move closer. But since we didn't know the exact height, although both Tony and I and Duo think it probably was non-conforming at 8.9 feet from the rear property line, it probably is a non-conformity that's going away because the shed is going to be demolished. the front setback, again, which I think is the most egregious and most notable when you look at the site, that will be completely eliminated. The new structure will adhere to and comply with the front yard setback. The side yards, one will be improving significantly. We're moving the house to the right and back. So there is an existing non-conformity on both sides. When we shift the location of the house, there is a net gain, if you will, in terms of side yard setback violations. So there'll be less than they were existing, the existing house. Although it's not a technical violation, the removal of the shed from the critical coastal resource area is something that I think we would all want to encourage. And the demolition and rebuilding of this home with a state-of-the-art septic and it being FEMA compliant, and all of the factors that I just covered require us to get three variances that we're here for. We're looking for two side yard variances. On the south, we're looking for a variance to permit 13 and 1/2 feet, where 20 is required. On the north, we're looking to have a 12 and 1/2-foot side yard variance where 20 feet is required. So those two distances kind of put the house in the center and further back, a much more logical location for the house on this particular site. And then the third is the critical coastal resources. Virtually the whole site is a critical coastal resource. So it is, it seems like a significant request, but we're permitting, we're asking to permit a 2.0-foot setback where 50 feet are required. So I'm happy to answer and address questions about hardship or reduction of non-conformities. I know you all have heard my arguments in those regards before, but I want to let Tony and Duo introduce the project in more specific terms.
That's Chris Stated, Tony Bolduc with Dons Team and Associates. So I just wanted to address the coastal resources for the site. So if you look, right, pretty close?
Get a chair for the guy online.
Okay, so we'll be able to point there. So the coastal jurisdiction line is the critical coastal resource that we're staying on. The CJL is also the tidal wetlands. So we'll call that south. South of that is still a critical coastal resource because it's a flood hazard area. So the site is entirely flood zone elevation 11, which is why you see that the structure is being raised to elevation 12 to make that FEMA compliant. And actually, there's a foot of freeboard now required for the building. So that's been raised an actual extra foot. So and removal of the shed, as Chris stated, taken entirely out of the tidal wetlands. And protection will be offered up by silt fence, which is along both property lines and along the back, just touching the critical coastal resource. That's pretty much it for that stuff. If you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I wasn't quite sure. You said, "How is it going to be 12 feet?"
Yeah, elevation 12, yes.
What's going to be the...
Underneath?
I can answer that.
Sounds like you're on.
That's my cue.
Would you like the architectural?
Why not? So essentially, this is the classic FEMA site. And what that means is that we have to reach down with the steps in the entry. And that's got to be flow-through, which is the entry is here. And it's actually, everything but the entry itself is actually open completely. And that open underside and with the code-compliant compressors set up on the building, this basically represents almost a diagram of what a FEMA-compliant building is. And because of the tightness of everything, it gets proportionally tall. But it's also because it's only a two-story building, and we tried to keep it as simple as possible. Maybe go to the next slide. We wanted to make sure that when we made this, it was quite beautiful from the salt marsh and from Route 1 and from the highway. So it was actually kind of almost like a pretty thing to see. And that's why we have a coupla. We meet all the height limitations with the variance we do. But there's the entry steps that come down. Everything else is open. Everything else is open. And we can't leave out some decks. Because it's a steel structure, it has to be because of the wind loading. We can have a little bit of extra deck space in a building that's floating in space. It's nice to be able to walk outside. And that's pretty much it. It's very, very simple, everything. The trails are all going to be what's around the building now. There'll be some nice eve projections. So it'll look like a box. It'll look like a nice thing. So.
Can't see. You say it's open, and I see grayed out areas with walls.
That's just to be fencing because we might want to store some stuff underneath it. If you have the pictures of the model, we could go to those too, actually.
So it's open structurally?
Yes, except for the stair, which has to be closed but can't be heated and has to have flood banks in it. So if you take a look at the model, basically you can see it's all open underneath. And there are the decks.
Is that your model right there?
Yes, my model right there. I'm not allowed to give it to you because it's evil.
Oh, you are.
Somebody got their wrist lapped this afternoon.
I did. I was told.
You can bring it, but you needed to submit it. So for the people online.
Probably have to leave it, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm keeping that on my desk, yeah.
So it's extremely simple, but I think it's also quite a wonderful thing in the context of this very open marsh site.
The house was built, I guess, obviously, before the coastal resource line was drawn.
Yeah, it has to be. I mean, it's just a one-story, not great building was added on to a bunch of times. And who knows when the core building was done?
Would you mind reviewing the coastal site plan since we're talking about the...
That's his cue.
Tony's back.
The application.
The vision appraisal says it was built in 1945.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, you had questions about the coastal site plan part?
If you could briefly review it for us. Highlights.
Yeah. Out of the application itself or just out of the site plan?
You want to zoom in on that?
Sure. I like reading from the application.
We have to go into detail just to summarize.
There we go. Here's the good stuff.
So we were on four. We were moving too quickly and I was looking on my favorite copy. Section 3. I might not find it. There we go. So the land trust owns the property to the north, which is zone R2. The east river is to the west. And a bulk storage slash bulk launch dock occupied the property to the south, which is also zone C. The property to the east across Green Hill Place is also zone C. It contains a four-bedroom residential home and detached commercial building. The subject and surrounding properties are all within flood zone 811. As indicated earlier, the site is only 6,528 square feet. So the existing house, outbuildings and septic are all going to be demolished, while a new code-compliant septic system will be installed, as indicated, towards the front of the property. And a new FEMA-compliant house will be constructed. The new house will be more centered on the property and will reduce the encroachment to the south building setback and the coastal setback. The encroachment into the east setback will be eliminated, which is the front. And the lot coverage will be decreased from 16.93% to 16.05%. Additionally, 120 cubic yards of filler will be required to install an septic system. And because impervious coverage is being reduced by 9%, no provision is being made to mitigate stormwater runoff.
Sorry. Say that last one again.
Oh, because, yeah, because we're reducing our impervious coverage by 9%. And then the same thing. There's ground they'll stormwater retention on site. And we're not proposing any because we're reducing. I think that's right. That's it. Yep, the existing encroachment will be removed from the coastal jurisdiction line slash tidal wetlands. All new construction will be land border of coastal jurisdiction line slash tidal wetlands onsite and adjacent. Resources will be protected by the installation of filter fabric fencing and a construction entrance. And the town agents will inspect the installation and authorize the removal upon completion of the project. Coastal resources are currently in good condition and will not be adversely impacted by the improvements. And again, this is public access because the parcel adjacent to us is the land trust.
Maybe show them the aerial.
Yes. He's old.
This is the aerial, pretty much just shows greenery at the moment. There's lawn area in the back and the trees.
Your aerial, but yes.
It's actually a red dock.
Yeah. It's funny, I think, if you're on the GIS.
No, it's just, we actually, there we are.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, that's the one you meant, no?
Yes.
Okay.
See how it's nestled in and recessed?
Yeah, and then this parcel here is the one that's owned by the land trust. So there's already, there's public access there.
Set past to post for...
Yes, right here is Boston Post Room.
And that's identified on time. Okay, got it. Yep, yep.
Two points I wanted to make on the coastal site plan. And I'm not sure whether you've seen it, but it came in late today, a response from DEEP that they had no issues with the plan. They recalled the prior zone change to the property. And they literally had no comments on this, which is pretty amazing given the nature of this site. And I had forgotten to mention of Tony's good coverage, the reduction in building coverage in this area. Although it's not a reduction in non-conformity that would serve to justify a variance, it is significant in the coastal site plan realm that you're covering less of the property certainly. I know they look for that frequently. So I wanted to point those two things out of what we're talking about, the coastal site plan.
Great. You might have, I don't remember this, but how many feet is the existing structure from the, like, currently from the critical coastal resource?
So if you count the bed, it is in the coastal resource. And then so the structure itself? Let's see here. So you're looking for the main building?
Yeah.
Of course, that's the one dimension that's not on there, but I do.
You can actually see it as the dashed line there as the existing building.
This is the shed.
And that's all the coastal resource.
That's the shed.
This is, I did want to point this out too. You can see that the red outline is existing. And what we have is we have a sort of shift back and slight shift this way to accommodate the septic. So I think from a coastal standpoint, whether we're talking about coastal site plan review or critical coastal resources, the fact that the building is a bit closer to the coastal resources has so less impact than a non-compliant septic system that would have where it's currently located. So from a coastal standpoint, what we're proposing is far better environmentally.
Where was the existing septic?
Existing, it's piecemeal. So we dug up, there's a drywell here, and I think we hit a tank over here. And there was clearly bleed out, which is why we had, we tried to do other test pits, but it was failing in this area.
And to be honest, we had actually done a design based on the existing footprint. And it was going to be quite brutal to try to weasel in some sort of snakey system around the whole thing. And we got the call from you, I think, that basically said, "Well, if we can have a great septic system, because like everywhere in Connecticut, like a five-foot difference makes the soils completely different if we shove it down a little bit." So in a sense, this is, given the fact that it's flow-through, is just about benign. So the soil difference in that trip distance is...
It's a huge difference.
It's bizarre. And this is not the only job this has happened, where you go 15 feet and it's a completely different soil type.
We also did two rounds of soil testing there just to go back and verify a second time. We brought a soil scientist both times.
So how far is it? What was to Dennis's question, how far was it?
So the closest point would be 14 feet, if you exclude the actual encroachment.
Any other questions?
I have a question about the height of the building. What is your interpretation of the maximum height?
Well, we have a coupla height, which I think is 50 feet to the top of a coupla. We're under that. We have a mean, a mean of a, the max, the mean of the main roof form, which is also the highest roof form, of 35. And we're under that. So we're under those two in this district.
I would note in the C district, unlike most of the variances you see, which are in the residential district, the heights are different. In the C district, you can by special exception go to 45 feet. You have to go to the planning and zoning commission to get it. But we're meeting the current without that.
I mean, a good example of that is we did Clarity Commons. And Clarity Commons is in a similar district where a four-story building is actually in the zoning. And so because everything's raised up, we took advantage of that to get a little more three-dimensional presence.
So the lower level does not include in the height?
Oh, it is.
No, it is.
Yes.
The top of the building is 48 feet high, right?
Well, just the coupla.
Just the coupla. He's 33, or 33.
For the main body of the building, by definition, says 30.
Do you have anything else? Steve, do you have anything? We can't see you.
I have all the things on my screens, but yeah, I have no questions.
Oh, actually, I have one more question. So, and I understand if you can't answer this, but does whether or not we grant a variance not have any bearing on whether or not the shed is going to be demolished? Or is it probably going to be demolished anyway?
I don't know. I don't know that I can't answer it. I think that the point is, is that the shed can be rebuilt in place. So it doesn't, you could demolish it. But if you have an intent to put it back, you have the legal right to put it back where it is because it's a non-conforming structure. So I'm not sure what the owner's intentions are. It may be needing to be taken down because of, it must be a dangerous structure at some point. But I think the point for, as I understand it, for the variance analysis is that shed has the, the owner of the property has the right to rebuild and the home that's there. Now, in the location where it is, which would, I think, turn the septic application into a whole different, not a new septic. It would be a remodel or a renovation.
Repair.
And so what you have is you have a failing septic system that would be tweaked with, rather than moving the structure in order to put the septic that is new and state-of-the-art. So I mean, I think the overall effect environmentally, I said it earlier, the overall effect environmentally here with the proposed project, rather than a rebuild in place, is significantly better. Any questions? Is anyone alone for you? Put your hands up.
No attendees.
Okay, so I'm not going to ask if anyone wants to speak in favor or against.
I just have one final question. And it pertains to narrow lot definition in the zoning rules. Does that also pertain to commercial lots?
Only this is residential, right?
I believe it's just residential. I can double-check that. And I want to correct something that I just said about the average building height too, because the average building height we're showing as 33.8, which is 30. So we do have to get a special exception for the extra 3.8 feet. But that's from planning and zoning because you can go to 45 feet. So I want, I stand corrected on what I said earlier in response to your question. But I do believe the narrow lot is only for residential lots too. But I can check that for you.
This is not specific in the...
No, it's not. It's just in the general section of team.
Right.
It only calculates it for heights in residential, so.
2.71. It's still 30 feet though, I guess is my point. Because we're meeting 60% or more of the minimum lot width. I think we're 68, where 100s required, right? And the commercial zone average building height is 30 feet. And that's what it says on that table as well, 2.71. And as I just indicated, because the average building height is 33.8, we're going to planning and zoning for the special exception to get to that height in the commercial district. So it's a good point, the narrow lot. It does, I don't, but I don't think it helps or hurts the analysis because all that, all that does is change what the required average height is in the zone and the same number in the commercial.
So just explain to me again, where do you see the 30 feet on the drawing?
33.10 at the midpoint of the main roof.
Oh, I see over here.
Yeah. And the one thing I can tell you, based on other towns, is there are towns that take into consideration the mandatory elevation of changing the base of where, of what the building is. So that, since we have to up a floor and that's not occupiable, some towns say that mitigates the net height accumulation because you're forced to go higher. Therefore, they give credibility to you.
To best raising existing structure.
Right, raising existing structure, right. We, sometimes even do with new ones. So it's, because FEMA's, there are federal laws that basically protect owners' rights, some of them interpreted to be, for anything that's raised.
That is an interesting point. We do have the right, when you're raising for FEMA an existing home, to go higher. And when you're factoring in, like Mr. Stella just asked about, when you're asking about, is something going to be demolished before and after? I think it has to be weighed against what the owner of the property has the right to do with no variances. And that is, the existing structure could be raised to an even higher height than what we're seeking to go to here if we took it, because it's an existing building. But because we're building a new building, we have to maintain a lower height. So the FEMA raise doesn't help us in the height limitation. That, I think that that regulation was designed to help people raising their existing house and give them some relief on the height. But when you're doing a demo and rebuild in a better location, the regs don't help you in that regard.
Although the boards do. The board's actually taking consideration.
The narrow lot is only mentioned under the bulk standards in the residential. It's not mentioned asterisk under any of the bulk standards for the commercial zone. So, but under the residential zone, where it says the height and width, you know, the house, that's where it's mentioned, C 2.71 for narrow lots. that's where it's, it's mentioned, C two point seven one for narrow lots. But it's, I, so I don't believe it, it applies to the commercial.
I, as I said, I don't, if, even if it did, I don't think it.
You're covered because it's thirty feet, yeah.
Analysis, yeah. Any other questions? Do you have any questions? Any comments? Any final comments anybody would like to make?
Like, like Chris said, we normally don't come here with a finished septic product, but this was such a tricky site that we figured that was the best approach.
So I move the, uh, post the open portion movements for ratios.
A second, then. All in favor? Any opposed? Steve, do you want to start? Put you on the spot, since you're on the TV.
I can handle that. Um, I think this is pretty much, we've seen a number of these come across our desk here. I think the, they're not expanding the existing structure, they're raising it to be compliant with FEMA requirements. They are, I believe that putting the compliant septics and then having the hardship to move the house forward, I think justifies the movement of the house to, and I didn't count the number of reductions in a non-conformity. I'm sure the legal counsel can set that, but I see at least there's no change. I think there's a reduction in the non-conformity, so I would be in favor of approving this.
Okay.
John, give it.
Uh, I agree with Steve. I, I took a look at the site and, you know, the setbacks and house pretty much is on its own, so it's really not affecting neighbors in any sense.
Right, that's a good point.
That's, so based on the fact that it's been approved, the coastal plan and FEMA then approval's application.
Yeah, I'd like to add, add to that, because I agree with those, the lot size limits. And the offsets, offsets, the existing offsets, the reduced by virtue of the shift. And I think the fact we gain state-of-the-air septic, it comes to the cost of moving the house a little closer to the river, but that doesn't seem to be as much of a negative as the positive of getting the state of the septic. So for those reasons, I agree.
John? I'll be honest, I do kind of struggle with, I guess, the legal justification, because I don't entirely agree with the inclusion of like, uh, of demolishing the shed in terms of like, I guess, the decalibration and reduction in non-conformities. I kind of just feel like that's its own thing, and it's kind of separate from where the house is being moved to. However, I guess, uh, uh, for the reasons that the other board member mentioned, you know, I'm making the house and more compliant, and I, I guess the fact you have a system, like, it's, it's definitely a very difficult property, right? It's difficult to work with, and it's, it's, and it, and it seems that the construction was done in a good faith to given the dynamics of the, you know, of other property, of, of the flood zone. So I'm just going to say that I think there is a hardship. I, 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 I don't know if it necessarily like technically reducing non-conformities, but if you want to just, I guess, argue that, that the way via, I mean, I guess the size of the property and also via soil and making it FEMA compliant, I think it does constitute a hardship in this case, so I will vote to approve it, I guess, as, as, with some hesitation.
Okay. I don't, I think there's nothing more I can add. I agree with what was said. There are several reductions, the fronts eliminated, I think mitigating, mitigating factors that, that environmental effects of the septic and, sorry, we mentioned one too.
State-of-the-air septic and the problems receded by DEEP. We will remove the shed, reduces.
Well, that, that may or may not be repurposed, so.
Um, unless we say, you know, the design includes a being removed, it depends on whether or not we put that in.
It's gonna be, well, it's gonna be demolished of the.
Yeah.
Because it's, they said it's an existing non-conformity, so they can rebuild on the spot if they want, if they choose.
Yes, unless the variance is approved contingent on that, not happening. And that's, that's up to, whether or not we think that's a perfect trade-off. That the house closer to the shed's gone, so it's kind of a trade-off. It's, it's, you know, it's up to us.
Yeah.
You said that.
I think, I mean, I, I think given the shifting a lot improvements, that, to me, that's, that's enough. I would, in my opinion, I don't think. Probably about shed there.
Yeah, I mean.
But it's.
I mean, I guess you could view the shed as like a gesture of goodwill and the fact that they're not looking at it yet. I mean, I just kind of just have a feeling that it's, it's its own thing, that's my interpretation, but if the board wants to consider it, I think that's a reasonable point.
I don't, I, I think though, they, they have a legal right though, it's, it's a thing, if it's built in the same spot and size and everything, I don't think we can.
Well, they have, yeah, they have the legal right.
You can. Make it, make that one of the provisions under which the variance is granted. And they have a right to keep the house exactly where it is. They choose not to do that. And because they're putting the septic in, we say, that, that makes sense. Okay, so, but you, but there's a trade-off. And you can have all kinds of trade-offs, I'm just saying. You know, they, when you make these trade-offs, you can, you can make your variance, um, state which, which trade-offs are, are fair enough. And I'm, you know, it convinced me that that's not necessary, but as far as whether or not they have an absolute right, we can't touch that, I, I, that, I disagree.
And I guess to say if it was conditioned in that way, I'd be more comfortable leaving, labeling it a full reduction in, in non-conformities, right? Because like you're actually like making sure that the non-conforming shed isn't going to be, so I think that does make sense. I mean, whether or not that's something we could do, I mean, I, I I think we probably have.
John, Steve, you want to weigh, weigh in on that?
I'm gonna mute, but I, you know, I just, I, I still go back. I think they're keeping the, you know, you gotta look at the hardship, and the hardship is result of doing something that's right, then that which is putting in the proper septic system. They're not expanding the house at all. They're keeping the same footprint, and they're raising it to be FEMA compliant. And I think, you know, based upon the location of the house and what they're doing, I don't see, there needs to be a trade-off. I think it just, I think the project itself justifies the, justifies, they're not expanding their square footage, they're raising it, they're putting in a compliant septic system, the coastal resource plan works. I, you know, I don't think we have to do a trade-off. I think the, the merits of the projects stand by themselves.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a fair point.
So the site plan says it's, it's going to be demolished. Are you struggling because you're, you're, you're trying to find a reduction in order to make the variances work? Is that what your question?
Um.
Whoa, not, not Dennis.
Oh, I, I'm simply saying that that, you know, the fact that there's a shed that's right up against the river. And you say, want to remove that, that actually is a benefit. We do have the authority to make that, you know, the fact of not putting that there as one of the criteria, which we say, yes, we'll approve this under these conditions. I'm not saying that that, that I'm convinced that we need to do that, I'm just saying it's something, you know, I, I don't know. That's pretty much, right? But that's.
Uh, uh, well, let me just add.
She, you've got the big version. I'm looking at this thing where, you know, there's seventeen lines per inch.
Yeah, I think, I, I see your point, and I just, I, I kind of think I agree with Steve that, that I think the project has enough merits on its own to not include the shed in our.
Okay. John, what do you think about this?
I think so too. I think, I think the shed is another pass.
Okay, so we'll drop that. So you want me to make a motion?
If you like to.
Sure. Right. I'd like to move approval of application twenty-five zero three for twenty-seven degree in North Place. Granting a variance of six point one three C for thirteen and a half feet to the south. Property line is six point one three C, twelve and a half feet north. Property line in section two seventeen, forty-eight foot variance. Um, or two foot to, um, pretty well. For coastal resources. Uh, given that justification being the lot size limits, what, what they can do, existing, or existing offsets to the coastal resource, lot boundary. There's, there's some reduction there, basically removing front offset, reducing non-conformity. And state-of-the-air septic is, is, we've got improvement on the risk, however, that the provision of such a septic is contingent on moving the house so that they can access the source. And there have been no problems cited by DEEP. Construction must be completed per the application and they submitted design.
We'll thank the coastal site and system.
Uh, put it all the same.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and that we approve the coastal site plan, it's consistent with the requirements thereof.
I would second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? This is unanimously confirmed, really.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And secondly, thank you to volunteer.
Have a good night.
So, minutes. Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna move, oh, sorry, go. I agree. Yeah. Okay, so I'm gonna put a motion to indicate the. Second, all in favor? Aye. Enormous, because, because I'm. Enanmerously motion adjourned. Do we have any other business? Anybody got anything? All right, motion adjourned. All in favor, aye? All right.
All right, guys. Thank you very much. See ya.
Steve.